Bienvenidos, bienvenidos a todos, especialmente nuestros futuros miembros del Consejo de Puesos, presidentes de Estados Unidos y otros que son, ya saben, por unos 25, 30 años. Bien, en realidad, ustedes son el presidente, ustedes llamaron a ordenar. También quiero mencionar que hay una presentación, ¿está la presentadora? Podemos presentarse, por favor.
Sí, soy la presidenta del Consejo de Puesos, así que estoy llamando a ordenar, pero no estoy dirigiendo este escenario. Marcus, así que Marcus, tráelo.
Gracias a todos por venir y en la medida de las varias agencias, de las personas aquí, intentaremos no hacer esto demasiado largo esta noche. Te diré algo, ¿puedo preguntarle al Consejo de Puesos, John, empezando con usted, ¿podría presentarse?
John Brayben, Consejo de Puesos.
Sean, John, Consejo de Puesos.
Soy Joe McLean, soy el teniente.
Mark Mahaly.
Denise Wheeler.
Rick.
Bien, voy a llamar a ordenar el escenario del Consejo de Puesos que continuamos desde el 11 de junio, cuando muchos de ustedes estaban aquí, para recibir evidencia de si continuar o designar como un río, una parte de la sección de la clase 4 de la autopista de la ciudad 7. Y cualquier persona que quiera testificar o presentar documentos, sé que juré en la última vez, pero voy a jurar en todos, ¿vale? Lo que vamos a hacer hoy es tomar testimonios orales, si hay, primero entramos en el registro.
Algo desde que nos conocimos.
Desde que nos conocimos. Si quieres hablar y tienes algunos documentos para darnos, podemos hacer ambos al mismo tiempo. Y te recuerdo que tenemos tres opciones, podemos mantener el camino derecho como una ruta de clase 4, podemos descontinuar la ruta o podemos reclasificar el camino derecho como un río legal. Lo que harán hoy es tomar evidencia, entonces, es un proceso formal aquí, entonces lo que harán, probablemente, es continuar el escenario hasta otro día. Te diré cuándo lo vamos a hacer. Puede ser que estén todos exhaustos y han dicho todo lo que quieren decir, eso está bien. Pero queremos poder pensar, oh Dios mío, no recibimos alguna pieza de evidencia que necesitamos y ser capaces de obtenerla y ponerla en el sitio web. Y luego, finalmente, en un futuro día, pero no muy lejos de ahora, cerraremos el escenario y luego deliberaremos como Consejo en privado y anunciamos, daremos una decisión escrita, ¿verdad? Dentro de 60 días de la cierre del escenario, dentro de 60 días de la cierre del escenario, daremos una decisión escrita. Y el estándar es que nuestra decisión tiene que reflejar la necesidad pública, buena, conveniencia y conveniencia de la ciudad. Eso es lo que tenemos que hacer. Creo que, ¿quiere decir algo? Creo que lo que me gustaría hacer para empezar, como una cuestión de courtesy, me gustaría que cualquiera de los Schulz, que están muy afectados y no casi los peticiónistas en este caso, pero definitivamente las partes interesadas, si alguno de ustedes quisiera testificar. Levanten su mano, vengan aquí y tengan la mesa aquí y les preguntaré, juraré en ustedes. Levanten la mano derecha primero, ¿juró o afirmó que la evidencia que están a punto de dar será la verdad, toda la verdad y nada más que la verdad?
Yo lo hago.
Genial. Cuéntenos su nombre.
Gary Schulz.
Gary, cuéntenos dónde vive.
4209 West County Road.
Bien, Gary, antes de comenzar, ¿tiene algún documento que quieran darnos que no nos han dado ya?
Te envié dos cartas. Y no aparecieron en el sitio web, supongo que las han recibido.
No aparecen en el sitio web todavía porque los tengo aquí. Entrenar en el registro, una vez entrados en el registro, pondremos en el sitio web.
Así que hay dos cartas y las están poniendo en la lista.
Sí, hay una de julio 13 y luego una correo electrónico de abril 15.
Le pregunté a Josh, él lo imprimió.
Él dice, déjame que el registro responda, está aquí. Bien, así que cuéntennos qué quiere decir.
Bien, trataré de mantenerlo corto y a punto. TH7, como encuesta, en la encuesta de la ciudad es aproximadamente una ruta de 1300 pies que va de, en realidad, el medio de la damnada Dugger Brook hasta la ruta, por nuestra casa. Termina en nuestra propiedad, no extiende más por nuestra línea de propiedad. El problema principal con nosotros es que desde que vivimos allí, y eso es los años 70, varias veces al año alguien llega al carril a una velocidad alta, generalmente cuatro-wheeler, motocicleta o camión de arena, depende, algunos días, algunos años son más ocupados que otros. Pero siempre es un preocupante, especialmente ahora porque tenemos, ¿cuántos grandes hijos? Cien. Déjame pensar, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, que están ahí jugando en el carril. Así que para nosotros ahora es un peligro, es más que una inconveniencia, es un peligro. Así que estamos pidiendo que lo pongan. De lo que he leído, lo que he oído, la mayoría de las personas que se opone a esto asumen que la ruta va más allá de los límites encuestas. Mi contestación es no, se detiene en nuestra tierra, es una ruta dead end, parte de ella es nuestro carril y no creo que sea de ninguna utilidad para la ciudad y si es algo, es un peligro para mi familia. Así que eso es, corto y rápido.
Gracias, ¿algún pregunta del Consejo, Gary?
Cuando compraste la propiedad, ¿sabía que esa ruta estaba allí?
No compré la propiedad, ha sido la familia, cuatro generaciones, nunca ha sido publicada. Así que la heredé, así que no la compré sabiendo que esa ruta estaba allí.
Bien, gracias.
Sean. Mr. Schulz, se referió varias veces a una encuesta, ¿hay una encuesta formal certificada de la propiedad que incluye la ruta?
Sí, está en los registros de la ciudad.
Recordada en los registros de la tierra?
Sí.
¿Hemos enviado eso?
No sé si eso es parte de...
¿Del registro?
Sé que Reed nos ha proporcionado muchas mapas diferentes, eso es diferente a una encuesta.
Tenemos un archivo que Marge Garfield hizo y ella reference la encuesta. Pero no tenemos la encuesta en ese paquete.
Sí, deberíamos...
Calles Ancient Roads Teams.
El archivo de Calles Antiguo es en ese arco Google.
Sí, la encuesta, tal vez no está ahí.
Déjame preguntar.
Perdí mi archivo con todo el material.
Déjame preguntar rápidamente, Joe, si la encuesta, si está en los registros de la ciudad, es una cuestión de publicidad, ¿necesitamos...?
Publicidad.
Publicidad, así que podemos tomar nota de ella, pero ¿podemos ponerla en el registro? Si cerramos el escenario, ¿podemos ponerla en el registro?
Punto de información. Hay una encuesta original datada a, creo, 1840. Tiene algunas variaciones de distancia, es parte de la trabajo de Calles Antiguo Roads Teams, tiene un archivo en el oficina de la ciudad. La encuesta especificamente dice que va de la propiedad de Glorans York, que era el padre, a los Schulz, en el pasado, y va a la ruta de la ciudad. Tiene algunas variaciones de distancia que pueden o no llegar entre esos dos puntos.
¿Podría decirnos su nombre para el registro?
Lo siento, Paul Hannan.
Sí, gracias.
Se refiere específicamente a esos puntos, por lo que tiene que ir de punto A a punto D.
Así que continuaremos el escenario, así que podemos obtenerlo y ponerlo en el registro y estará en el sitio web.
Para responder a su pregunta, creo que sería mejor practicar localizar la encuesta, si hay una, y luego ponerla en el registro como parte del continuo escenario en lugar de tomar nota de algo que nadie aquí tendría necesariamente la oportunidad de ver.
Así que cuando la encontramos, ¿la enviamos a todos?
No, lo que hacemos, creo que cuando la encuentres, la pones en el sitio web.
¿Quién va a hacer eso específicamente?
Lo aseguraré que podemos encontrarla, creo que probablemente esté en el paquete de cosas que tenemos que olvidé traer el papel. Hay una copia aquí, Paul la tiene. Oh, bien.
¿Paul, la tiene aquí?
¿Quieres darnosla?
¿Paul, te importa deshacer esa copia?
No, la he leído.
¿Quieres que...?
No, está bien.
Oh, está en ese gran bolso.
Creo que está en el archivo de carros, creo que está en el archivo de carros.
¿Lo puse en el archivo Google? Y debería estar online.
Así que lo aseguraremos, Denise, ¿puedo preguntarle, asegúrate de que de una manera u otra está inscrito en el libro?
Así que, ¿entro esto ahora como...?
Sí, marcarlo y luego entramos a la hora adecuada.
¿Alguna otra pregunta?
Tengo una pregunta sobre eso, ¿verifica, Paul, si notas que verifica las líneas existentes donde comienza y termina, ¿verifica?
De nuevo, creo que los Yorks eran antepasadores de lo que hemos estado refiriendo como el lugar de la carros y la ruta de la ciudad es la ruta de la ciudad.
Te diré algo, si queremos, si queremos preguntarle, dejemos que él testify, ¿vale?
Sería difícil de seguir, hay demasiada información.
Bien, Gary, ¿hay algo más?
Solo tengo una cosa, Paul, cuando usted GPSó esa ruta para el archivo de Calles Antiguo Roads y usted notó en su informe que fue una encuesta corta, en otras palabras, no fue a nuestra línea de propiedad, eso es parte del registro, también del archivo de carros.
Bueno, te diré algo, le preguntaremos a Paul si testificará, ¿hay algo más, Gary, que quieres decir?
No, no entendí exactamente de dónde venía, pero nunca he encontrado ninguna correlación entre la granja de carros y la propiedad de York.
Gracias, ¿algún otro? Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Anybody else from this family who wish to testify, please come up, raise your right hand. Juró o afirmó que lo que están a punto de decir es, la evidencia que están a punto de dar es la verdad, toda la verdad y nada más que la verdad.
Sí, lo hago.
Este es Josh Schulz.
¿Sería más fácil hacerlo a todos?
Bien, dije a todos la última vez, pero hay gente que quiere testificar. He estado a su consejo. Así que, cuéntenos su nombre de nuevo.
Sí, mi nombre es Joshua Schulz.
Y su...
2957 Dugger Brook Road, está justo por la ruta, de la propiedad de mamá y papá. Gano en la casa de mamá y papá, así que vivo allí toda mi vida. Así que, primero, solo quería testificar, así que con respeto, y he enviado mi testimonio en escrita, solo tenía un par de cosas que pensé que debía mencionar, pero la encuesta menciona que es 1,386 pies. Es muy claro en la encuesta dónde comienza y eso es por debajo de la vieja damnada, por la ruta de Dugger Brook, entre, en realidad, donde vivo ahora, en la casa de mamá y papá y mi casa, parte de mi casa solía ser el viejo oficio de esa vieja tienda que solía ser dirigida por esa damnada.
¿En la casa que vive ahora?
La casa que vivo ahora, sí, en Dugger Brook Road. Y la encuesta es muy clara acerca de ese punto y luego dice que va hacia, da en rodas, pero es 0.26 millas, 1,386 pies, que termina esa ruta muy dentro de la frontera de la propiedad de mamá y papá. No puedo tirar una roca y golpear la frontera con los actores de la lombarra actual que poseen esa propiedad, la de mamá y papá, desde donde termina la encuesta, ese 1,386 pies. Y creo que durante nuestro caminato vimos eso, pero la ruta TH7 ha sido delineada tanto como cualquiera que haya tenido registro, como en los registros de la ciudad, que creo que comenzaron en... Creo que en los años 1930 había una mapa, pero realmente en 1941 fue la primera que pude encontrar en los archivos donde podríamos empezar a ver, como la ciudad estaba enviando mapas a AOT y había que designar como un río sin viajes durante años y probablemente haya sido sin viajes probablemente más de cien años. Cuando mi papá solía venir y jugar cuando era niño, mis abuelos poseían la propiedad, él decía historias sobre caminar por un río para llegar a la propiedad donde actualmente viven. Y así que si una casa no estaba allí, TH7 en ese punto tenías que caminar por un río, ni siquiera podías subir a TH7 y eso me dice que ni siquiera podías decir que había una ruta allí entonces. Y eso fue en los años 40, así que incluso entonces, hace mucho tiempo, esta no era una ruta que fuera cercana, querida por cualquiera en la ciudad. Y sé que en la mapa se muestra que hay una ruta allí, pero una cosa, lo que me preguntaba fue, bien, ¿por qué esta mapa, de repente, si miras la mapa actual, muestra 0.5 millas, pero aún así la encuesta es diferente? Y así que miré y llamé a AOT, y esto es de nuevo en mi testimonio escrito, pero AOT primero me dijo, como, mira, solo porque una ruta aparece en la mapa no significa nada. Dijo, esto no es un medio legal de establecer una ruta, así que, bien, pero todavía estoy confundido, ¿por qué de repente aparece 0.5 millas? Y miramos los archivos y encontramos que en 1973 es cuando la primera delineación de 0.5 millas fue dada. Y de nuevo, le pregunté, ¿hay algo en sus registros que muestre de dónde viene? Y miraron y de repente dijeron, oh, creo que la encontramos. Y miraron, creo que fue el registro de 1973 que la ciudad envió al estado. Y en allí dice, por primera vez, cruza el, previamente, de 1941 a 1973, el UNT, el río sin viajes, y de repente dice 0.5 millas y se pregunta cómo se logró, dice "escalado". Y así que lo que pasó fue que un oficial de la ciudad y AOT dijo, sí, lo escalaron del mapa, así que pusieron una escala en un mapa, que es una escala de ingeniería, ya sabes, un pie largo. Lo pusieron en el mapa y vieron que era 0.5 millas y simplemente escribieron 0.5, TH7. Así que no tomaron el tiempo, y entonces, en 1941, no estoy seguro, nadie lo hizo, no sé, pero no tomaron el tiempo para mirar la encuesta, hacer referencia a cualquier otra cosa, solo escribieron 0.5. Así que ese fue un buen misterio que se solució para mí. Y de nuevo, AOT, ellos me dijeron, dijeron, eso no es legal, ya sabes, escalar una ruta en un mapa no es un medio legal de establecer una ruta en Vermont, y ellos dijeron eso. Yo pensé que eso era realmente buena información, así que fue de 0.5 millas versus la encuesta de cuarto milla. He notado, como con otros actores que han escrito y opuestos a la discontinuidad, he notado, muchos de ellos están basados en muchos escenarios de "si" y cosas como enfermedad ecológica o rehabilitación ecológica o restauración. Y la ruta no es una ruta pasable y no ha sido así durante más de al menos 80 años, pero probablemente, de nuevo, probablemente más de cien años. Y ni siquiera puedes caminar por ella, y yo como si me diera un poco de la cabeza a eso, y luego, bueno, primero, la ruta, la encuesta no va más allá de la propiedad de mamá y papá, así que eso es lo primero, ya sabes, los actores que se oponen están pensando que la ruta va más allá de su propiedad. Pero incluso con lo que es, realmente no es accesible, no es accesible, no hay buen acceso a esa tierra allí atrás y es por eso que nadie la usa. La gente no la camina, la gente no esqui, es solo, no es una descanso agradable. Los actores que quieren acceder a eso, o acceden a la ruta de la montaña de Woodbury o antes de que se publicase, ven desde el lado de Wister, la ruta de Calles Wister. Pero no es una ruta que haya sido accesible durante los años. En realidad, he arrastrado mi cerebro, puedo contar probablemente cinco personas en toda mi vida y probablemente ni siquiera eso, honestamente. Y papá tampoco recuerda a nadie durante sus muchos años, así que creo que es seguro de decir que durante 75 años tienes una pequeña cantidad de personas que incluso han intentado aventurarse allí.
¿Quieres decir caminar?
Hemos caminado, sí. Y así que no suena como esta ruta que es querida por la ciudad. En realidad, la mayoría de las personas, incluso los actores que se oponen a ella, ni siquiera habían caminado realmente por la ruta antes de enviar sus cartas. O, ya sabes, sé que hay algunos, y son buenas personas, por cierto, estas son buenas ciudades, estos son mis vecinos y no tengo nada contra ellos de ninguna manera. Pero algunos de ellos caminaron la ruta durante el caminato de junio 11 y creo que miraron como esto estaba realmente limpiado, quiero decir, tomaría un esfuerzo muy significativo y probablemente un bulldozer y otras cosas, directo por el patio de la madre y el padre para reestablecer una ruta, y ni siquiera puedes decir que había una ruta en ciertos lugares de la casa de mamá y papá. Habrían de ser demolidos para conseguir una ruta de viaje allí. Y luego pasar por áreas secas, hay un puente que va por la ruta ahora, así que hay muchos disturbios que tendrían que pasar. Y simplemente, ya sabes, jugando estos escenarios de "si" que los actores han puesto a la Junta. Y eso me hizo como si me diera una pequeña cabeza sobre la realistividad de eso. Quiero decir, y una cosa que he aprendido durante los años es que cuando tomo decisiones para mi familia es que no puedo llegar, quiero establecer, quiero dejar un legado para mi familia, pero he realizado que no puedo llegar desde el cementerio, solo puedo llegar tan lejos, diría. Y tengo que tomar decisiones para mi familia que nos sirvan mejor en el aquí y ahora, ya sabes, con un ojo hacia el futuro, pero realmente, ahora mismo, siento como mirando la historia, mirando las situaciones actuales, esta ruta no ha sido algo que haya sido cercana a los corazones de alguien en la ciudad de Calles. Y incluso los actores que lo cazan, sé que Paul Hannan ha pedido permiso para cazar en la madre y el padre y papá dice, seguro, vayan y cazan, y con la excepción del tiempo que GPSó, incluso Paul, no creo que realmente haya pasado mucho tiempo en TH7, creo que no es una ruta muy fácil de caminar. Y no puedo ponerle, Paul, solo estoy usando, Dios lo bendiga, a él porque él estaba aquí hablando, pero otros actores que han accedido a su tierra para cazar no usan TH7 para hacerlo. Y luego, supongo, solo sé que durante el proceso de Calles Antiguo Roads, que fue bastante reciente, había un sentimiento bastante pesado en toda la ciudad para descontinuar muchas rutas que eran calles antiguas. Y creo que ese mismo sentimiento existe hoy, no fue hace mucho tiempo. Y creo que la ciudad ha como hablado su opinión, hey, sabes, queremos estar con nuestros propietarios. Y así que creo que todavía existe hoy con los actores y con los propietarios de la tierra y las personas como nosotros que están afectadas, mis hijos que están afectados todos los días. Y supongo que solo quiero cerrar, supongo, con esto, que creo que, sé que el Consejo no va a votar hoy, sé, pero si, hipotéticamente hablando, el Consejo votó hoy y descontinuó TH7, creo que en 50 años no se preocupará nadie, excepto los Schulz. Creo que en 10 años nadie se preocupará. Puedo decirte que mañana por la mañana, si el Consejo votó hoy, ahora mismo, descontinuar TH7, lo descontinuó. Creo que mañana por la mañana, creo que casi todos, excepto los Schulz en esta sala, probablemente se despiertarán, podrían dar un pensamiento rápido, van a beber su café y van a seguir con sus vidas. Ciertamente, no parece que nadie se dé mucho amor por TH7 ahora, excepto los Schulz y ATVs, cosas así, que está en mi testimonio escrito y en el de mi padre también. Pero las personas que, si el Consejo votó mañana por la mañana, puedo decirte una cosa que va a pasar, es que van a haber cuatro adultos, sé que Charlie y Jenny, mi hermana, yo, mi esposa, Kristen, se despiertarán probablemente con lágrimas en los ojos y serán lágrimas de alegría porque por primera vez nuestros hijos pueden estar ahí jugando en esa ruta y no tener que preocuparse por un camión de arena o un ATV subiendo y aplastando a un niño porque pudieron haber bebido o en la mitad de la noche cuando hay una noche de película de la mamá y los abuelos y los niños están ahí y van a dormir y a las 2 de la mañana, de repente hay luces de cabeza y ruidos fuertes en el carril y papá se despierta, ¿qué está pasando allí? Y los niños se despiertan llorando y eso, creo que irá lejos. Y luego, para las generaciones futuras de Schulz también, esos niños, esos niños futuros se van a servir. Y puedo decirte que también mañana por la mañana, si esto suceda, mamá y papá, los abuelos se despiertarán con lágrimas en sus ojos también, con lágrimas de alegría porque hemos estado esperando mucho tiempo por esto. Papá llegó al Consejo de Puesos y sé que hubo una conversación, no creo que hubiera sido una petición oral, pero fue una conversación que comenzó, pero desde ese momento, creo en los años 70, creo que está en los registros de la ciudad, en el archivo, pero desde ese momento hasta ahora, nada ha pasado. La ciudad no lo ha usado, nadie lo ha usado. Y es solo el tiempo para limpiar esto, es el tiempo para limpiar esta ruta, sacarla del mapa y poner esto en la cama. Sé que la gente ha hablado de activos, pero solo diré, creo que nuestro activo más precioso en la ciudad son los activos de nuestros hijos y ese es el futuro de la ciudad. Y puedo decirte que estamos criando a nuestros hijos y espero que quieran quedarse en esta ciudad. Tenemos, hasta ahora, 11 abuelos, 11 abuelos. Y creo que entre 11 hijos, vamos a, es una apuesta segura, va a haber algunos Schulz en la ciudad por un tiempo. Y generaciones futuras, quiero decir, y vamos a vivir, van a vivir en la propiedad de la familia, esa propiedad, esa área que hemos como carvedo. Y creemos, hablando, creo que somos buenas personas en la ciudad, contribuimos, ayudamos y estamos pidiendo que la ciudad nos sostenga y nos ayude a hacer esto más seguro, por favor, y déjanos ir a la cama en la noche y no pensar en esto más. Dejen que nuestros hijos vayan allí y jueguen en el carril, en sus bicis y nosotros no pensar en esto más. Y ese es mi pedazo de amor. Y agradezco a todos ustedes por tomarse el tiempo para escuchar a mí y a mi familia.
Gracias, Josh. ¿Cuestiones de Josh, de la Junta? Josh, tengo una, ¿alguna pregunta?
Tengo una rápida, y es interesante después de caminar esa ruta, es claramente, ya sabes, la ruta es incontenible, es una ruta viable, me sorprende que incluso un camión de arena pueda subir allí y a menos que se escoja, y eso sería escurdir los lados de ese garaje, quiero decir, ¿se desvían de eso cuando lo usan? ¿Pueden imaginarlo?
No, no lo hacen, no pueden, giran en la calle de la madre y el padre.
Eso es lo que quería decir, es lo mismo, de una parte nos estás diciendo que nadie viene y de la otra, camiones de arena o ATVs, ¿qué hacen?
Solo lo ven en el mapa y suben, y lo que hacen es decir, oh, esta es la entrada de alguien y esto es cuando, pero no saben eso hasta que llegan, no pueden ver la casa de mamá y papá por la ruta, así que no saben eso, solo ven una línea en el mapa. Y honestamente, incluso si era un río, incluso si fue designado como un río, van a verlo en el mapa y van a decir, oh, yo llegué a esa ruta, y van a subir al carril pensando que es por eso que estamos pidiendo una completa discontinuidad, no un downgrade a un río, porque todavía van a ver esa línea de desplazamiento en el mapa y van a subir por allí y luego se dan cuenta... Porque si ustedes, bueno, sé que el caminato no fue admisible como evidencia, pero lo explicaré. Cuando suben al carril, la ruta va directa, pero hay una montaña de hierba manchada allí. Y ven eso y no, creo que no, deciden, como, no vamos a subir y romper el patio de la casa de la persona. Y creo que pueden pensar que es un error. La mayoría del tiempo giran y sacan del carril antes de que nos demos la oportunidad de salir y agradecen y digan, hola, ¿podemos ayudar? Ya saben, están en camino hacia afuera, pero todavía...
¿Cuántas veces pasa esto?
No puedo darte... Sé que el pasado, sé que el pasado otoño sucedió, en realidad, uno de ellos se rompió al final también y estaban parados allí por un tiempo. No, de nuevo, no somos anti-personas, no llamamos a la policía o nada, se rompió en la parte inferior y pararon su automóvil. Yo bajé y solo recogí el número de la tarjeta de licencia solo por mi propio bien, solo porque no, ya sabes, era un extraño. Pero yo estaba en la mitad de la noche porque había luces de cabeza subiendo la calle de la madre y el padre y mi esposa estaba enfermando, no a este niño, a nuestro otro niño que está en casa viendo The Lion King para la 728 de este mes. Pero en la mitad de la noche, estoy mirando con binoculares a través del oscuro y árboles porque hay luces de cabeza y podía ver a la gente caminando, habían salido de la calle de la madre y el padre y llamamos a mamá y papá para asegurarse de que estuvieran bien, como si alguien estuviera bajando.
¿Es esto una vez al año, una vez al mes?
Tres o cuatro veces.
Sí, tres o cuatro veces al año, sí, sí.
¿Algunas otras preguntas?
Solo quiero escuchar de Josh.
Just, I want to hear from Josh. I did venture out on the road twice. I went out with the Callas Trails Committee in the spring. And then as part of this process, I took the walk. But I want to hear from you, Josh, in terms of what you discussed regarding the surveyed length of road. Eighty-four rods, point two-six miles, according to the Callas Ancient Roads Team file. That entire length, let's say, starting with the county road, how much of that is visible in the landscape? Is it the entire length visible? Are segments visible?
Yeah, so segments are visible. If there, I will say this, if there was not a known road there, we didn't know there was a line on the map, and I was walking through the woods, and I saw the ravine that exists there as TH-7, I would not know that that was a road. I would have looked at that if, so if this was just a mountainside. And I would say, I would think that that was just a washed-out gully from a brook that had come down. So now, knowing that it's a road, people say, oh, there's a road here, it's washed out. The road's washed out, because the washout area is right there. So if the ravine is an indicator, I would say there's a significant portion that is not visible as a traveled road, probably like as a percentage, probably like sixty to seventy percent. There are certainly areas on, right by Mom and Dad's house that are clearly, you do not know there's a road there at all, completely invisible. There's a mowed lawn, it was like that. Mom and Dad bought the property, Dad just, you know, raped it and planted grass kind of thing, you know. But I will say this, too, Mom and Dad's driveway closely resembles TH-7 or is on the old alignment. But Dad was telling me that it wasn't exactly on the alignment. And we don't know exactly where the road was. But Dad said, he goes, you know, looking at kind of the area. Dad's like, he thinks he remembers it probably kind of favored, if he was guessing, a little bit in, a little bit, like, towards the north. But he didn't really know, and you couldn't even really tell back then there was a road there, Dad said, he was like, telling me. I'm telling from stories that Dad's told me over the years, but that you couldn't really tell TH-7 was there when they were building their house, and even when he was a kid. So they built a driveway and had to put in a culvert.
Right, that's in the record that he has to be able to bring it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Josh.
You're welcome. I have the letters in writing, but it looks like you guys have them, so...
Yeah, I have all of the documents you sent.
Yes, that's what this is.
Yeah, this is a July fourteenth letter.
Yep.
And this map.
The map, yeah.
And then all these other attachments. Thank you for telling me what UNT stands for.
Yes, you're, yeah, very welcome.
Untitled?
Untraveled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, a pleasure. Okay, does any other member of the Schulz family wish to testify at this point? Okay, who else would like to testify? I guess there's some information that I need that involves asking people to testify. So Reed, Jerrington, could you come up and answer some questions for us? My way of explanation, Reed supplied some maps to us. The maps are in the record. I'm going to use this and then enter it. Oh, we...
Well, I wonder, I don't know, is this different than what you...
Just a couple of oversights.
But it's what you already, what I already gave you.
Yeah, there aren't any.
Okay, I think for purposes, what I'm going to do, I was just going to suggest that you can ask the question, and then Reed can mark up his copy or your copy, and that can be, go and read. Wait, okay.
Reed, excuse me, did he give an extra copy of Reed's packet?
There were five. You know what happened to the fifth?
Or one or six.
I have a copy of one.
I don't remember.
Okay.
It should be in the, in with the exhibits.
That's Joe's six, I guess.
What Reed sends is in with the exhibits.
Okay, what I will do is make sure, we'll make sure we get you a copy.
Get it right off the town website.
Yeah, but it's nice that, it's nice, it was...
Yeah, but it'll print out, it'll have it right up, and it'll look exactly the same as this.
Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
So which copy do you want to use?
I have, we can use mine.
Want I have for the record?
Actually, not a bad idea, okay. Reed, what I want you to do is take this, and I want you to mark on it, on each map, if you would.
What does he, what do you want to mark?
Just a circle, actually, do we have a colored pen here? Use this red pen.
Yeah, that's good.
If you would just make a small circle on each map around TH-7. That's all, a point of information. And then initial your little circle.
Okay, make a...
Just make a little circle around TH-7 on the map.
Oh, where it is, okay.
Yeah, where it is. And while he's doing that, I'm just, by way of explanation to everybody in the audience, because this is a bit tedious. What I noticed when I looked at these maps is that on some of the early maps, for the life of me, I couldn't find the road. And so I just figured, since he supplied these maps, he's making this, and what we'll do, if, I don't know, how are we going to make this available?
Well, we can scan it.
We'll scan it.
Replace it in color and post it on the website.
We'll scan it and color it and post it on the website.
Do we have the ability to scan and color in the town offices?
Yeah, or I can do it from home.
I have a... Oh, thanks.
I do a question while Reed's doing that. Documents for the record from people that aren't here, at some point, do you want me to go over what they are in the different?
Yes.
That's going to be hard to see on that.
While he's doing that, Paul, do you feel that, is there anything about the survey that you gave us that you need to tell us?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then I'll have you come up, too.
I'll, I'll.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to twist your arm.
No, no, no. Not that.
Kids are being so quiet. That's amazing.
Well, that's why we're moving away from these. There's an end to that.
Yes, it is. When they've had enough, we'll know it. Did everybody sign in while we're doing this? So we have it for the minutes?
Just initial everything.
And where did my sign-in sheet end up?
Right here.
Reed, Reed, when you're done, go back and put your initial page circle.
There is a question.
Is it appropriate for a member of the public just to ask a question for clarification?
A witness?
I think so, probably Gary or Josh. And I apologize, but we may have explained this, and I just missed it.
Yeah, okay, wait, wait, just a second. It might be better to just, just for organizational purposes, if we can just finish with Reed and then take a question, I think it'll be better.
Right, and then we can have...
That way we're clear about...
And then it'll be in the minutes.
Right.
Josh, how old is the one who's home watching Lion King for the seven hundred and twenty-eighth time?
Well, two and four, both of them are.
I, home alone?
No, oh, no, Nan and Pop are, yeah, my in-laws.
We have a baby monitor.
Yeah.
Modern, yeah?
Yeah.
Modern technology.
Yes.
They're eating popcorn, watching life, they're in their glory.
I'm going to go sit with them. That sounds pretty fun, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you, Reed. What I now, before you go, and then this is going to be entered into the record. Reed, before you go, is there anything you want to tell us about these maps?
Well, the ones I, these all came off the Vermont Highway Development website, with the exception of the first two, which are Walling's eighteen fifty-eight map and Beer's eighteen seventy-three map. Those are standard references for privately published town maps. And then I started, I didn't copy every map that was on file of Callas Town Roads that was on file, because those are annual things. But they, so I understand that they started doing this, keeping town highway maps in Montpelier in nineteen thirty-one. And interestingly enough, the road is shown at that time going all the way to the Worcester Town Line with the mileage one point one.
Which map is that, Reed?
It's a town highway map.
Dated, that's the one that you dated, which one, eighteen thirty-one?
Nineteen thirty-one, yeah.
Is that a Beer's map or an official town highway?
No, I think it's an official town highway map. It's, it's the only one they had dated nineteen thirty-one. I knew that was the first year. And nineteen thirty-three, that's the same situation going all the way to the Worcester Town Line, mileage one point one. And there's a, there's an aerial photograph.
Is that the nineteen forty-two one?
Yeah, nineteen forty-two. Also have one, I have one in my personal possession, nineteen sixty-three, but it doesn't show nearly as much as this nineteen forty-two one. And then the subsequent maps are just...
What does the aerial photograph show?
Shows that neighborhood, going all the way over to Hawkins Pond, so near the Worcester Town Line.
Which is the Worcester Town Line, I'm here, Reed?
You can't see it. It's invisible. The reason there's a visible line around Lumberjack LLC's property is that my family used to own that, and my father had put a pencil line on his boundary. So that's, that particular part is very clear, because that's not an original part of the map.
Is the house, is the house shown on the left, slightly upper-left of this thing? Is that the location of the current house?
Where are you from?
The current house wasn't built yet.
Yeah, right, so what's this?
I don't know. I couldn't, I've never been able to identify it.
Yeah, okay. And then the line extending from it, is that what you think is the road?
Yeah.
And goes into the property, to the car, which is not wooded at that point?
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Now, it seems to stop just short of the house, and then the barn is behind the house.
And when you say house, is that this? Where you, you circled it here in red, is this, what is this?
What, did I circle the whole thing?
Say this, say what it is, so we know, we all know.
Okay, I don't know.
What did it?
I don't know what it is, that's why I'm asking. You have this part here circled in red, and there's a blob here.
Yeah, that could well be the site of the Schulz's house, but I don't know, I can't.
Okay, but the road is that line?
Where's county road on here? Here. This is county, this is county road right here. So what are you saying, is this, this road here is county road?
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, the other maps just show changes over the years. They're just kind of somewhat of random sampling. I don't know at what point, I don't think, they didn't have, seem to have a map on file for every year.
They didn't have. I don't think you had to do one every year.
Yeah, and so it skips around a bit after, after it's shortened, you know, not going to the town, the Worcester Town Line. I think what I've got here in nineteen thirty-three is the last map I could find that showed the road going all the way up the Worcester Town Line.
And this two thousand fifteen one, you didn't, you didn't circle where John Highway was? Might be hard to check, it's pretty tiny.
Put your initial.
And, yeah, make your initial look.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Reed, anything else you want to tell us?
Can't think of anything right now.
Okay, thank you. Larry, do you have a, two, thank you. Larry, do you have a question about one of the witnesses that's already gone?
I'd be, perhaps Josh or Gary. My name is...
He should come up here.
I'm sorry, my name is...
Hasn't come up to answer the question to you. You can get, you, Larry, makes me have a statement.
Okay, Larry, tell us your name, present the question to me, I'll ask the questions.
My name is Larry Bush, I live in Callas, I'm on the Conservation Commission. We've made a submission about this, but we still have it under consideration. And if this was explained, Gary, you guys talked about, I missed it, I apologize to everybody. But I was just curious about the survey, Gary, you first said it, and it's been talked about a lot. I didn't understand what kind, you know, when it was done, what was it done for? And is it going to, is it in the record or will it be?
You did miss it. Paul Hannan provided the survey to us, and I'm going to ask Paul to come up now and talk about it.
Okay, so both Paul and you are talking about the same survey.
Okay. I think my questions will be answered.
Paul, would you come up? Paul, you want to tell us your name, and I'll swear you?
My name is Paul Hannan, I live in South Callas.
It's warmer there?
Much warmer.
Do you affirm that the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You want to tell us about this survey, Paul? Of what you know?
You need it?
Sure, yes, I do. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is to tell it in the context of what else I had to say.
Please.
Can I get to it?
Sure.
So, full disclosure, I've spent a lot of time dealing with ancient roads. It's my profession, part of my profession. I think I can, I think I can say, I've never, I've never met a properly laid-out town road that I wanted to see discontinued, so I have a bias. It's on the table, bam, right there. I think they're public assets. I think regardless of their condition, they are something that the town acquired over time, often paid for in one form or another, either by forgiving. Anyway, the point is, they're public assets, and it doesn't matter to me at all whether you can drive it now or not. A little context for the town highway maps. Josh is absolutely correct, they have no legal standing per se whatsoever. They are an expression of what the town believed at the time the map was produced. They started in nineteen thirty-one, as someone else said. And the deal in nineteen thirty-one, prior to nineteen thirty-one, there was no state aid to town highways. No money flowed from the state. The town raised all its own money to take care of its roads. So four or five years after the flood of twenty-seven, the state said, we got a deal for you, we're going to give you some money, but you got to map these roads. And you got to map the roads you're willing to maintain to, quote, "pleasure car status." So at least unless the select board was lying in nineteen thirty-one, at least as late as recently as nineteen thirty-one, in theory, somebody could drive a pleasure car up there.
Up Towne, huh?
Up Towne, I would say. A lot has happened since nineteen thirty-one, and I absolutely don't question. I have not been up there in recent memory. Both Gary and Josh are right, I've hunted that land a lot. I've hunted the Lumberjack LLC land, I've basically been all over it. So yes, I know in general what the condition of the road is, and it's not great. But nonetheless, the road was laid out in eighteen forty. This is where the survey comes in. One is by a proper layout and opening by the select board, which I believe this document does. The other is something called dedication and acceptance. And there may not be a document as we're expecting or hoping to see like this one in the records, but it's possible somewhere in the records, there's an explanation for how it went from .26 to .5. In other words, the town may have just unworked on it. They may have put a culvert in, they may have hulked gravel, they may have, there may be a reason for it, but that, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter vis-à-vis where the road goes across Schultz's land, and whether that section should be discontinued or not. The layout document has a series of bearings and distances, and the Schultz's have been focusing on that, and I understand that. And it's one of the harder things for a surveyor, or a new surveyor to get used to, which I don't know if I mentioned, that is my profession. But it's very hard, what I'm about to say, it's very hard for a layperson to accept. And that is, a monument, call for a monument is more important than the distance or bearing stated in the document that's telling you to go from point A to point B. So, and the reason I say it's hard for survey, young surveyors to accept that is that, we're measurers, gosh, we ought to be able to get that right, that ought to be really important. But what's really more important is, what is the, what is the thing, what is the thing on the ground? And it's clearly telling you to go from Lorenzo York's land to the county road. So I have not done the research, but I believe Marge Garfield did, and she did this, this cart, these work for the Ancient Roads team. And so regardless of what the distances and bearings say, the goal of the select board in 1840 was to get you from York's land to the county road. So I'm not the least bit troubled by some gap that you can or can't throw a baseball to cover. It's supposed to do what it's supposed to do.
Where's Lorenzo York's land? I see it in the diva, where is it?
Yeah, I believe that it's the Lumberjack LLC and the so-called car property that Reed used to own there. So, that, that part is not really material. As far as...
I have to interrupt you. I just want to repeat, I want to reflect back to make sure I understand. You're saying you, as a surveyor, believe that the most important thing to look for is the beginning and end of the called-out points, and what they are.
Exactly.
And that there could be, for any number of reasons, you're saying that the distances demarked in the survey are correct or incorrect, but that we know and can identify the two called-out points, that's what matters?
Exactly.
And we know that the Schultz property was not owned by Lorenzo York at that time, in the survey?
I don't know that at this point, but that's, but those, those properties have been in separate ownerships. I'm, I would have to look at my lot line overlay, but I think it might be a lot line, the original town lot line in there. So, and then the issue, the issue about, so you have all these town highway maps coming forward from 1931. Again, they're just an expression of what the town believes they are, believes they have rights to. What happened, the reason you saw some activity in 1973 is that that's, which I think Josh referenced, sort of went from UNT to Class 4, is that that's the first year that this whole classification system that we're also conversed in now existed. It didn't exist before that. The town highway maps prior to that have designations on them, untraveled being one, you know, different surfaces, but they didn't break them down into Class 2, 3, 4.
That was gonna be my question, that's what you're talking about?
Until 1973. So if you look, it doesn't matter what town, dozens and dozens of towns, if you look back through the records, that's, that's when it happened. And there's often correspondence that explains that. So it's not surprising that there was a switch, there's something different happened in the 1973 map. I, you know, I don't have a whole lot, I, I'm, I live at the end of the dead-end road, and I get people coming, driving up rubbernecking all the time, more than three or four times a week.
Oh, you're...
At my place. But it is what it is. I mean, that's what, that's what, I love living at the end of the dead-end road.
It's a true road.
People, and I, just for the record, not for the record, but just to make a point, I spent three days at the town clerk's office before I bought my place, making real sure that it never went through. Now, I'm not your average person, I know about these things, and so I'm not suggesting everybody should have, should, well, maybe they should. But I know my, my, my road ended one rod and eight links off the northwest corner of my house. So. I, I would say occasionally I get some bad behavior type drivers coming up, but I'm not convinced that bad behavior is, makes great public policy. Yes, you should deal with the bad behaviors, but I don't think you should discontinue the road. I think you also, I know you've got a letter from the Lumberjack folks, and I think as much as Schultz's would like to see their land enhanced by not having this road, I think the Lumberjack folks, you'd be doing a real disservice to them if you suddenly said, "This other access to your road, to your property that you may or not be using now is foreclosed against you. You can't use it anymore." Just to get into the weeds a little bit on the road law, there is a provision that says, "A properly discontinued road that served, it was the sole means of access to part or all of a person's property, that person maintains a private right to use that discontinued road." If that were to prevail, the, the Lumberjack folks could use it. I don't think it would prevail because of the type of access that the Lumberjack property has, has from Woodbury Mountain and the type of terrain it is. I think when they say part or all of your land is in the law, it's anticipating someone with a big piece of property, or a piece of property with a huge ravine in the middle, or some ledges that you just can't get over, and yet, oh, look, over here, there's a perfectly good discontinued road that would serve that part of the property. As I said, I've been all over that Lumberjack land, and it's not bad. It's not topographically challenged. I don't know of any big ravines that would prevent, other than town highway stuff.
They, they have access to their property?
They have great access off the Woodbury Mountain Road.
That was my open answer to that question.
Yeah.
To the entire parcel is what you're saying?
Well, again, in, in a legal sense, I think the answer to that is yes, I'm not a lawyer, don't play one on TV, but nonetheless, I think, I think in a legal sense, yes, and in a practical sense, yes, because of the terrain, because of the type of land it is. They don't, it's not the sole means of access to part of their land.
Well, we know from when Reed took us on the walk, that he and his brothers used to bush-hog around the park place, and they accessed up on the Woodbury Mountain Road. Could I ask that question?
Uh-huh.
Because how did you get up here? And he said, "Oh, no, we came up from the Woodbury Mountain."
Is there any, Paul, anything else, before I ask people for questions?
No, I just, you know, again, I feel like, I'm not going to refight the battle I lost 12 years ago, but I think, I think the mass discontinuance was a, was a bad decision. I think that Callis, the team that was put together had their hearts in the right place, but they started from the premise of, and these are not talking about roads that were invisible. The unidentified corridors that were mass discontinued were a total gotcha. In other words, you bought a piece of land, somebody like me goes and finds a road that goes through your door yard, you never had a hint, you couldn't see it, you couldn't no imagine, it wasn't on the town highway map, and it was a real gotcha situation. Knock, knock, here come the ATVs. That's not the situation here. After that batch got mass discontinued by the town, the next batch were ones that you could see, and that there were layouts of, and they did have the legal documents, but they didn't appear on the town highway map. So the decision that the town made on a one-by-one basis was, what are we going to do with those roads? The team, again, I think well-intentioned, started with the position of, if the landowner doesn't want it, we're not going to recommend it. And I, again, I think that was a bad public policy decision, because these are assets, they have potential for future use, they have potential for walking trails, hiking trails, biking trails, oh, and, and access to people's land. And I just think it's, I think foreclosing access to somebody's land is a bad thing.
Thank you. Questions?
I just went back and looked at that report, by the way.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand the, the final point that you were making, Paul. So, it's come up a couple of times, the, the history around ancient roads, or that's the Garfield term for them, the unidentified roads. And your point is that how we thought about those, that set of roads in 2012-ish is, that's a whole other issue. These are, this road is on the map, nobody's disputing it's been on, on the map. So it's not an ancient road, doesn't really belong in that conversation. Am I putting words in your mouth?
No, if you are, I appreciate it. That's, that's exactly the point. This, I heard Gary, I didn't hear an equivocal, equivocal, a solid answer, but the road was there in 1970, or whenever Gary moved in. Reed owned the land up above, he knew the road was there, the road's on the town highway map, and there's a legal layout of it. It's a whole different situation than what we were dealing with back in 2012.
Well, that's why we're here today, that's why...
Thank you very much, I have one other, no, thank you, I have one other request. Is there any representative of Lumberjack here? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Come back up, you just horn in, sit down.
Should we bubble test their mind? No, no, just real fast, just because, well, first of all, just, I know the question about Lumberjack, any access. They have accessed the land of Buddy and Mama Dad's property for forever, everybody who's owned that property from Woodbury Mountain Road. So just to kind of get that on record historically, and then Paul, I think he kind of said that as far as he knew, but just to make sure, from the Schultz's perspective, nobody has ever gone up TH7 and accessed that abiding property. And it's been untraveled, designated as untraveled since 1941, when the records started, like, like Paul Hannan said. And so even back in 1941, it was an untraveled road, it was unused. And that, that aligns with the stories my dad told me. And then the only other thing I just wanted to say is, I have heard this a lot over the, because we've been to, I've been to a lot of meetings, plane commission meetings, Conservation Commission meeting, ancient, sorry, Trails Committee meetings, talking about this. And I hear it a lot where folks have said, I've heard it two or three times now anyway, where they're like, "Oh, I live on a Class 4 road, that deadends or doesn't deadend, and it's not a big deal, it's not a problem." And I'm sitting there thinking to myself, but it's not, it's just, just to speak for our, our experience with our kids and our family, that's not our experience. Our experience is, is quite the opposite. So I just wanted to kind of let you guys, I don't know if I said that clearly, I probably did, but that's all, so.
Very clear.
Okay, all right, that's all I had.
Thanks, Josh.
Is there anyone, thank you, Josh, is there anyone else who would like to testify? We will continue this, so, we're continuing it just to make double sure, okay, just a second. We're going to continue this just to make double sure, so that we need to put more material in the record, we can, because, just to say it, this is not like, you know, a lot of the legislation, legislative things that we do day in and day out. We have to make a decision based on the record in front of us, we can't take anything else into account. We can't, you know, if somebody meets us in the parking lot and says, we can't do that. It's got to be in front of us. So that's why we're being so careful, to make sure that whatever might be there is in front of us. Yes, Gary, did you want to say anything?
Just one quick thing. There is apparently some concern that what I'm trying to do is limit access to our property, that's not the case. It's never been posted for generations, and never will be, as far as I'm concerned, but like Josh said, you can only reach out the grave so far. But if I wanted to now, and I wanted to limit access, I could post their property, and I could fence off the survey portion of TH7. So, what you'd want the town to wind up with is a four-mile dead-end trip. And I have no desire to do that, and, but it's just, it's within my rights to do it, but I don't want to limit access to our land. It's been wide open, that's it.
I do have a question for either of you. Am I right, I just want to make sure I'm right. Is it your position that the fact of the road being on a map contributes to the number of people who come running in with ATVs or whatever?
Yes.
If it was not on a map, you don't think people would pull into your driveways and do the same thing?
No.
That's your position, right?
That's our position, and I can't deny it. You know, you know, guys, I thought, you know, well, where's the road? It's over here on the back.
Yeah, thank you.
The road were a trail, you know, a trail also shows, you know, so.
There's no way to take it off a map now, though.
Okay.
Eventually.
They do.
The mutters look, they have maps.
Reed, Reed, would you stand up so we can hear?
I just wanted to confirm what you said, you'll, you'll still be taking written testimony?
Yes.
Okay, and then?
We're still taking written.
Will there be some notice on the hands?
Yes, what we'll do is, we will, in a very noisy way, we will close the hearing. Okay? What we're going to do is continue this to a date certain. When should we continue?
How long is it going to take, I guess?
I understood this was our last, and we noticed it as the last day of taking evidence.
Well, well, hang on, though.
That's what the notice is.
What I understood is, the biggest reason that we're leaving it open is because we were getting testimony or input, I'll say, as, you know, today, that we really haven't even had a chance to look at. And, and looking at, the next step is for the board to have a chance to deliberate with all the information, and in that process, questions could emerge, and we could discover that we have a different remember, memory, or a different interpretation, or we're missing something. And so leaving ourselves room, it doesn't mean people can't submit more, but leaving ourselves room to actually request information and, right? That's, that's, that's what we're doing, is giving ourselves time, so we don't, so once we start deliberating, if we have questions, we don't want to have to reopen the hearing.
I guess my question is process, so we don't have to set a date certain to, for everybody to come back, but we need to pick a date for the board to meet, to deliberate if we have additional questions, we could then notice, no.
I think we're going to set a date certain, and if there's nothing more to say, when that date certain arrives, you'll close the hearing.
And if we don't have any questions.
And if there's no questions. If there are questions...
In the meantime, are we going to deliberate in the meantime?
You can, yes.
We can.
We can.
Okay, that's my question, so we can meet and start having deliberate, if we find we need additional information, then we would, we would renotice that we need this information and have another continued public hearing?
You may do that. It may be the board itself that puts evidence in the record. You may find that you need a map, or you need some other piece of information that's germane to the question. So it may be that it's not anyone who's participating today, but the board itself recognizes like, oh, we need that state, the current state highway map to reference, nobody's put it in the record, let's make sure it's in the record. So the board can put it in. This just gives you one last opportunity to put into the record anything the board might need, and anything else that anyone else might have for your consideration. And when that's done, you can ask, does anyone else have anything else they'd like to testify about, or the exhibits? If the answer's no, the hearing's closed. If the answer's yes, you take it.
So, so Paul Hannan made reference to what I think characterized as unfortunate decision to mass discontinue, what they call invisible, unidentified corridors. And just so, you know, that was, for your application, Joe, Joseph, that was done by a vote of the townsfolk. We, the select board, said, "We're not going to, we could have made the decision," but we put it to the vote of the town, and it was a two-to-one vote to mass discontinue. That's all water over the dam, but what... That's all water over the dam, but what I'm interested in is, what is the resulting effect of, what is an, for this committee's review and consideration, what is an unidentified corridor in terms of the law at that time and now, in the case law maybe, if that applies? And what is the effect of that vote of the townsfolk on this?
So let's not be, let's just be clear about one thing, I think Paul said this. This case has nothing to do with unidentified corridors. This is an identified corridor. It's been identified for a long time.
There is.
And so none of that statutory language regarding unidentified corridors, the debate that happened previously in town, it's irrelevant to the discussion we're having.
So if there's a segment of the road that was not identifiable at the time of that vote, despite being on the map, see, my understanding is?
Well, let's talk about it in deliberations.
That's why I want clarification. So that might be, yeah.
I would like to point.
I can quote you chapter verse.
Could Paul come up here?
No, I think, I don't, it's, I don't think. Let's talk internally. If it turns out that's relevant, we'll have them come back.
Well, also, we are leaving the record open for further written submissions.
Yeah, right.
Right, so. I was going to ask, Paul, there's some written comments on this 1840 survey that you were explaining.
Okay. I'll tell you one thing, one thing at a time. Could we pick a date?
Yeah, let's pick, a Monday is probably when the board is used to meeting.
I don't have my calendar.
And I didn't, I forgot my other file, so I don't have a calendar in front of me.
But let's just, because, you know, it could be, not too far from now, but, you know.
We would regularly be meeting, we have a regular meeting a week from tonight, on the 25th, and we have regular meetings on the 8th and the 22nd of August. Therefore, the 1st or the 15th is available as not a, not a.
Not a regular meeting.
Why don't we say the 15th?
August 15th?
I will not be there.
We want to do it when you're here.
It's going to be September.
What about August 1st?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Can we do August 1st?
I think I will. Okay.
So Monday, August 1st, here at 7:00?
Yeah, but what I think we'd like to do is, this is a practical matter. I don't want, first of all, there's no need for anybody to repeat what they've already said. It's on the record, it's been recorded, we actually heard it, and might even remember it, I think. I think the more important thing is, it could be that August 1 will just be a formality. That is, we will have added one or two documents to the record, it's right there, you know, and you can see it, what we've added, and we don't need more testimony, in which case, all that's going to happen on August 1 is we're just going to move to close the record, and that's the end of it.
Hang on, now, when do we actually deliberate to discover whether we have?
Questions.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Or we may have questions and want testimony, and we'll try to notify people, so that you can not bother to come, if it's a formality, or you can come if it's real. Now, that's my problem with August 1, is it too soon, because it does not allow its time to deliberate.
So, so. We could deliberate on August 1st.
Then it's a private, that's in private.
Right?
Right, that's, that's why.
So if we had August 1, pick, it'll either be deliberation, or it'll be deliberations and more testimony, and my question is.
But we won't know until.
We can go to September, there's no rush here, folks.
Well, so, yeah, so, so, to me, this is our process, guys. Clearly, we need a time where we are just going to meet, just us, and we're not inviting the public, because that's where we surface, what are our questions, what are our issues? And then, I guess we have to convene a formal hearing to ask, or can we just outreach to somebody who would have the information we're looking for and ask, ask for the information or ask for a question to be answered, which becomes part of record as something the select board submits?
We can do that, but if it's in writing, we can do it, and it shows up on the.
Well, that's part of my question, is the process. If we get something, if we meet on August 1 and we deliberate, which I would be in favor of, and in between, or if somebody submits something tonight, after tonight, all the other documents that we've gotten between the first hearing and this weren't considered part of the public record, because we had them submitted, they're part of the record, do they automatically become part of the public record if Paul sends an email explaining what he means about the 1840 survey?
I think anything that comes in, in the interim, should be put in the public record after we convene a hearing, that will be one of the administrative things that we think.
Let's wait till September, this is, we're shoehorning it in, end of the summer, everyone's on vacation. You know? People might not want to witness.
I think that's fair. You know, we're, we are, you know, we're bumping up against John's vacation. I'm texting my family to say, are we going to be back on the 1st? If we, if.
That's fine.
If we just push it into September, then we are giving, and the board has, you know, we have, I'm also remembering the list of things this long that we're also trying to shoehorn in, but we're not, tonight we're focused on this, but tonight we're focused on.
Fifteen other things.
Fifteen other things we're trying to get done, too, so.
That's fine.
I think we can all take a breath and say, you know what, this is so great. We can deliberate in September, ask our questions, let our questions surface, make sure we have the answers, open one final, "Hear ye, hear ye, all come," before we close the record, right? That's generally the process.
But I thought we were going to have it so that when we met to deliberate, as we're talking amongst ourselves, we might come up with questions, so.
Exactly.
So we want to make sure we leave it open, after we deliberate.
That's why we're on the same page.
So what's the first Monday that, we don't have a regular select board meeting in September?
Well, Labor Day, which would be.
We don't want to do it then.
We don't. So then we have a meeting on the 12th. The first Monday that we do not have a meeting in September is Monday, the 19th.
Okay, so we want to do, continue, we're going to meet as a board on that night, at 7:00 PM, here, and then we'll deliberate, I'm just saying this so people like.
Everybody can hear.
Everybody can hear, as a board will meet, deliberate, if after we deliberate, we decide we have something else that we need from the public, then we'll announce continued hearing date.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So, I want to give an example, all right? Let's say we meet on September 19th, and we talk it through, and we decide, and that, by the way, my giving this example doesn't mean there's any truth to it.
Well, no, you can't be.
Let's say we decide, Paul Hannan said some really interesting things, but he admitted he's biased. So we need to hire someone who is a surveyor to be our witness, who's a neutral witness, and come and do a study and tell us the same thing Paul Hannan told us, but.
But not biased.
But not biased. Let's say we did that. And let's say we decided it was worth spending money to do that. Okay. If we do that, then we'll, you'll all know, we'll, we would have them come, and if they did a written report, it would go in the record, and we would probably give you all a chance to respond to that. We will not allow some significant piece of evidence to come in and kind of blindside you guys and not have a chance to address them. So we're, that's why we're taking our time, we'll continue. If on the other hand, we deliberate, no, we don't, we have everything, maybe we have it on our minds, but we don't need anything more, we'll let you know. We'll come out of executive session, and we'll just close the hearing.
No.
No?
Not procedurally. We're going to be in executive session, we're going to be deliberating.
No, we would come out.
Of deliberations.
Right, but have you warned that?
Oh, we would have to warn, okay. One way or another, you'll know what we're going to do. So we've set that date, and you had a question?
I have one comment. I'm Charlie Flower, I'm the son of five, my family lives.
You guys get sworn in and have to say.
Yeah, do you want to testify?
Sure, well, it's just more of a rebuttal comment.
Okay, well, that means that you promised that your testimony would be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And your name's the?
Charles Flower. I wanted to comment on something Mr. Hannan said, because he's up there admittedly extremely biased, which I applaud him for admitting that, but also as a quasi-professional testimony, as a licensed surveyor.
Stephanie and Larry.
As a licensed surveyor, providing some sort of, a form of quasi-professional testimony. And I heard one comment, as a professional person myself, many years in engineering work, and with surveyors and for surveyors myself, I heard him, and I heard him comment, and I heard a member of the board confirm that that's what he said. He said that he's willing to cast aside, in not so many, not so many words, cast aside bearings and distances that he sees on plans and surveys for what he sees on the ground. And I wanted to comment that that is far from what you would, certainly not a universal comment you're going to find from other licensed surveyors. Matter of fact, I'm sure the licensing board might be happy to hear that come out of your mouth. So I wanted to bring that up, to make sure that the board isn't taking his testimony as a sort of professional light, as though it's okay to cast aside the survey accepted by the town, and instead judge the length of that road based on what we can see.
I do want to just clarify that Mr. Hannan didn't say that he would cast aside what's in the survey in order to just trust what's on the ground. What he said is that the beginning and end points in the survey.
I heard that comment as well, but he also said that what he sees on the ground can be just as important as what he sees on a survey, which, from my experience.
He said the monuments, the monuments that are noted in the survey, which are what's on the ground, are the anchors, maybe? That's not a word he used, I might not be understanding correctly. I didn't not, I agree with Mark, I did not, none of, I did not take it that he was saying you disregard the survey for what you can see out there. You use the survey's guidance on what you will find as monuments to inform, and they are, they are more important than the distances, and he gave us a specific example of that.
The distance isn't a survey.
Are you a licensed surveyor?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, listen, thank you for your.
Thank you, I just wanted to be weird, I appreciate it.
Okay, take care.